...just later passed an act that I'd like to read first and then we're going to recognize a special person. It's an act, it's public act number thirteen dash fifty-seven. It's an act concerning honorary diplomas for Vietnam veterans. Being enacted by the senate and the House of Representatives and General Assembly convened, section one, subsection I of section two-ten dash two-twenty-one A of the general statutes is repealed and the following is substituted in lieu thereof. I, a local or regional board of education may award a diploma to a veteran as defined in section twenty-seven dash one-oh-three of World War II or the Korean hostilities as described in section fifty-one dash forty-nine H or of the Vietnam era as defined in section twenty-seven dash one-oh-three. Who left high school prior to graduation in order to serve in the armed forces of the United States and did not receive a diploma as a consequence of such service. The addition of the Vietnam era veterans occurred in June, on June third, two thousand and thirteen. So at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Cobza and Annie Bowen to join us on the side for our special recognition.
It's definitely my pleasure to award one of the diplomas described by Mr. Augustine this evening. In nineteen fifty, Francesco Esposito left his hometown in Nacastro, Italy and traveled to the United States to find work and make a better life for his wife and five children. Two years later, his three sons arrived traveling on Andrea Doria. The following year, his wife Angela and two daughters joined them. In nineteen sixty-three, their youngest son Anthony entered Warden Harding High School in Bridgeport, Connecticut. During his sophomore year, Anthony decided to join the United States Navy and was stationed in Newport, Rhode Island. He served four years in the Navy onboard the USS Stickel where he worked in the engine room, traveling to parts of Africa, Japan, Italy, Sweden, Scotland, and Vietnam. His wife Helen, one of our retirement honorees tonight, tells us that Anthony has told her that it was an honor to serve his country and that he thrived with the structure and discipline that the service provided him. While in the Navy, Anthony would give an occasional haircut which proved to be a valuable asset for his future. Once Anthony completed his four years in the Navy, he returned to his home in Bridgeport and enrolled in Bullitt Havens Technical School at night where he received his barber's license. He opened his own barber shop in Westport where he's been cutting hair for the past forty years, is affectionately known as Tony the Barber. His wife Helen calls him the best handyman of all time and says there's nothing he cannot fix with a specialty in plumbing. Anthony's been living in Monroe for forty years where he and Helen have raised three daughters. They now have nine grandchildren. Besides being a doting nono grandfather, which is his favorite pastime in the world, Anthony enjoys being with extended family, eating pasta, and going to his Navy reunions every two years with Helen, sharing wonderful memories with his USS Stickel buddies. He thought he was coming here tonight to join in the recognition of his wife Helen, but it is my honor to present this diploma and welcome to the Massey High School graduating class of two thousand and fifteen, Mr. Anthony Peter Esposito.
Everyone, if we could have your attention, Annie, your granddaughter, wrote a poem recently that she'd like to read for you.
What is Memorial Day? A day to remember all who died. They may be gone, but our hearts still be inside. People march and parade down the streets, singing about what Memorial Day means. Many died in a terrible war. Their lives were taken straight to the core. People pray that griefs don't be hereby. No more bombs will shoot through the sky. We remember the people who have lived. No one will forget how long it has been. Their lives they gave, their lives they give. Only the sacrifice is a thing that still lives. Now we move on, but never forget that Memorial Day has not ended yet.
We, in a family, no one could believe that after nine days on Andrea Doria, he, maybe he ate once. And nobody could believe that he would join the Navy at the age of seventeen and a half, whatever. He was six inches shorter than from the time he went in and the time he comes back home. With two years, he grew six inches. Maybe he was a skuny, like this. Now he's taller than I am. We are proud for him. I'm proud for him and the whole family is proud for him. It's an honor for us, you know, I don't want that. Let's yours.
Did you know about this?
No, I didn't know about that.
Thank you all.
And at this time, we would like to recognize our retirees. So again, I'm going to ask Mr. King to join me on the side and we have some parting gifts for our retirees. I'd like to say a few words over there. Tonight, we're recognizing, we have, we've been recognizing our honorees, our retirees, I'm sorry, for many years in the Board of Education meeting. Typically, that has been for the certified staff. We're breaking new ground in recognizing all of our staff this year and we will continue to do so in the future. So all of our associations, all of our employees will be recognized as one because we know that it takes a village to raise a child. And whatever your role is in Monroe Public Schools, okay, you play a vital role in bringing our kids to the place that they need to come to. So we'd like to now kind of join ranks around all of the retirees, whether you're a secretary or paraprofessional, a teacher, administrator, or any, to celebrate the achievements of your, of your career with the Monroe Public Schools. Tonight, we're recognizing ten retirees. The total accumulated number of years that our retirees have been here is two hundred and fifty-seven. Two hundred and fifty-seven years of work and dedication to the Monroe Public Schools. So a quick division tells you that twenty-five point seven is the average length of stay with the district. We have one exception, she could not be here this evening, Jean Mauricia, who has forty-nine years of teaching in Monroe Public Schools, which I think is probably the longest I've ever heard of. So a special thank you to Jean if she happens to be watching here this evening. One thing I know, in my career in education, there, there have been times in the past thirty-five years or so when I've asked the question, "Am I making a difference?" And I'm sure all of our retirees here have had a time in their career where they say, "Is this really the career that I chose? Am I doing it right? Am I doing enough?" That's kind of self-reflection often occurs when you're engaged in working with kids because you know there's always a little bit more that you can do to, to fulfill a life and to touch a heart and to make a difference in a child. One thing too that I know in my career is that when you get to this point in your career where you're, you're contemplating retirement, you start bumping into young adults and sometimes middle-aged adults that you had as students, okay? And they often remember very small things that you said or did in that classroom which tells you, should tell you, that you did make a difference because they remembered it. It impacted them in some way. I would like to thank all of our retirees for what you have done for Monroe Public Schools. I've been in four districts, I say this often, and it's getting to be a bit of a cliche, I think, but I mean it from the bottom of my heart. I've been in four districts, public school districts in my career. There is no district like Monroe Public Schools. The camaraderie, the, the work ethic, the care and concern that all of our staff have for our children is unsurpassed in any place that I have ever been, in any place that I have ever seen, really, in the state of Connecticut. So I want to thank you from the bottom of our, of my heart. So I have, we have, our token parting gift for you is an engraved pewter plate, okay? Which I'd like to call everybody up and have everybody stay up here. I'm going to ask George to award your plate and I'd like to stay here for a group picture because we like to get it on Facebook and, and celebrate you this evening. So first, Helen Esposito. So this is a family affair for the Espositos. I'd like to recognize Barbara Reagan, who could not be here this evening, and Jean Mauricia, who could not also be here this evening. Thank you for everything that you've done. We really appreciate it. John, could you get everybody in, in one shot? George wants to stay on the end and I'll get on the other side.
Terrific presentation and ceremony. Congrats to everybody on their retirement.
Thank you all very much.
So with, now we move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Next, we move on to the reports of the committees and the liaisons. Any reports from any of the committee heads? Communication Lee, no? Okay.
The, the student representatives, the seniors were at Agwam today in their senior trip and tonight is the underclassmen awards, so I think that would explain the absence of our student representatives this evening.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we'd like to offer up part, public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak?
Are they doing a PowerPoint? Sure.
Is this working? Good evening, everyone. If you would please introduce yourselves, guys.
I'm Brad Mantle.
Good evening, I'm Nicholas Souza. And we are here.
I'm Alex Holka.
We are here tonight to discuss an issue that's been going on for a couple of years, parking passes at Massey High School. We're both, all three of us are seniors and we are here to discuss the out-of-line issue of it being a hundred and fifty dollars. We are concerned with Massey being ridiculously out-of-line with parking fees. In case you didn't know, the price of a student parking pass is a hundred and fifty dollars, which led us here tonight to discuss the aggravating but yet concerning issue. As high schoolers, a hundred and fifty dollars is two college application fees or three SAT registrations. That one hundred and fifty dollars is used for several purposes that us students know nothing about. So first, my good friend Alex here will give you some background behind the reasoning of the expensive parking passes.
Good evening, everyone. So after further research into looking at the prices of our parking passes and what our money goes towards, we were shown that in two thousand and two to two thousand and four, there was a renovation. Land was purchased in the lot for one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars plus, plus an additional forty-five thousand for the, what's known as a junior lot here. So this would be a cost of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So for this, the Board of Ed made a deal that, that this would be paid off with student parking passes, raising the price to a hundred and fifty dollars. The current, well, this should have been paid off by now. We did the math and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars should have been paid off within a couple of years, especially within ten. So basically, we believe that this price should not be at this level anymore. Our current parking fees are apparently used to pay for the striping of the lot annually which costs seven thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's also used for replacing curb ripped out by plows, which is six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. It's also used for paving, which each year costs twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars. All of this adds up, added up together would bring us to thirty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. At any given time, you can find about five hundred student drivers in the lot. Thirty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-five divided by five hundred equals seventy, seventy-one dollars. I believe that this is a much more reasonable price for students to be paying compared to one hundred and fifty dollars because most students are working minimum wage jobs and I know, at least my parents, they aren't going to pay for my parking. One hundred and fifty dollars is just not a reasonable number anymore, especially since our lot has been more than, more than two times paid off. Now I'm going to hand it over to Brad.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to pass on some information about our bordering towns and their parking passes, their, their price. So in Seymour, as you can see, they don't pay anything, as well as Trumbull and Palm Barog. Shelton High School is ten dollars to park and they don't have assigned parking spots. Like, I was thinking, if we lowered the price, we could maybe assign the parking spots. The teachers get their own parking spots, everything. Benell, Benell High School, they pay twenty-five dollars to park there and in Bethel, it's fifty dollars. New Town is eighty-five and New Fairfield's a hundred dollars and Massey reaches the highest at a hundred and fifty dollars. Do you guys have anything else to say?
The psychology behind this, I believe, is because a lot of students aren't going to be paying for these outrageous prices for parking passes. I think one of the main reasons is because tickets and citations, if you don't have a parking pass, you're given tickets or citations. Usually, they're either thirty dollars or five dollars. Throughout the year, I, without buying a parking pass, probably received about forty dollars altogether. That's a lot less than a hundred and fifty dollars. I can afford forty dollars. Tickets and citations are just much cheaper. The enforcement of this only comes around maybe once every two or three months. There just really isn't much enforcement, so if you don't buy a pass, basically, you can just park there anyways. I think the triple, triple-digit number of a hundred and fifty also scares off students. Even if it was lowered to something like ninety dollars, that just is a lot more reasonable for students to be paying.
And we're all not so lucky as some kids are. Some people have to buy their own car, pay for their own insurance, pay for their gas, and then they have another, they have to pay for their SATs, their tutoring, the college applications. It all adds up and it's very expensive. You know, I, as, as Alex said before, I think the triple-digit number is really scaring off people. And if we lowered the price, I believe that many more students would actually be willing to pay like eighty-five dollars or fifty dollars for the year. I don't have anything else to say. You good?
I'm going to go on with the enforcement that she was talking about. This is one of the biggest problems I was very concerned with was the discipline of it. If you're going to charge the hundred and fifty, why don't you start checking for the passes at the beginning of the year? When I was a junior, they only waited till half the year to start checking the passes. So at that time, they were only charging kids seventy-five dollars. So if that's going to happen, why can't I just wait till half the year and then going to charge a seventy-five? So this year, I decided to wait and I wasn't going to pay the one fifty because I can just wait and pay half the price for only half the year.
One other thing that is just a little bit unclear is why we need to even pay for parking in the first place. We don't need to pay for parking at the library, which is also municipal land. I just, I don't see also why students specifically need to be paying for their repairs of the parking lot. We don't pay for, we don't pay for the roof repairs, we don't pay for security updates. We don't pay for any of this. I just don't understand why. It's students' responsibility having the parking lot upcapped when we are not the only people who park there and we are the ones specifically paying for this. It's just, flat out, just too much money for a student to be paying.
So we'd like to hear what you guys have to, give a comment or any questions about this or any concerns.
And I know we're seniors and we're leaving, but we wanted to present this as a, something to, for you to think about for the next year, upcoming years.
Typically, the board does not respond immediately because they don't have the research that you have in front of you. And so typically, they hold back from, from that, but they may ask you any clarifying questions if anybody is interested in asking any questions.
Alan.
Is the park, student parking lot full?
It's, it's pretty full.
Yeah, mostly every single guy is full.
Some, some kids don't even park in parking spots and they get ticketed for that as well.
Okay.
Later on in the agenda, just for your information, there is a, there is an item for approval by the Board of Education, which is the rates, fees, schedule, tuition fees and facilities use fees that they'll be discussing and voting on and, and that is the parking fees. So I expect discussion later on in the evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for your, your input and your research. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak publicly? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. I'm happy to report that all of the Sback testing in the district has been completed at this point. I'm hearing that there is more and more talk at the state legislature concerning the Sback testing at the eleventh grade and the possibility of that being replaced with some other tests. Although it hasn't been named officially, it sounds and feels like the SAT, okay? I don't know where that discussion will take us. I don't know who will be responsible for paying for those SATs. I know it costs a lot of money to, for the state to administer the Sback. I don't know if they're willing to take on the cost of now because it's a mandatory, if the SAT became a mandatory test, would the state then buy everybody's SAT and how many times would you buy it? Because some students take the SAT, SAT two or three times in the course of their high school career. So that's a, that's something that we're watching closely. We have our district celebration. Again, our retirees and our Teacher of the Year will be announced on Thursday evening. That's at the Tashua Knowles and it is at six-thirty, I'm sorry, it's at five o'clock at Tashua Knowles. The First Building Committee for the Turf Field will convene for the first time on Monday, June eighth, at six-thirty, right here in the media center. This spring, we conducted a survey, a parent survey of feelings, attitudes, items of concern, et cetera, for all of our schools. And I'm very happy, I'm not going to give you all of the report details because we'll do that at a later date when we've had more time to analyze the specifics because there's a lot of the specifics in each of the main categories here. But we have been focusing on improving our communications for the past couple of years, you know? And just to give you a sense of the kind of returns that we got when communication was mentioned in the survey, the questions asked on communication, here were our school reports. Eighty-two percent satisfied, happy. Eighty-five percent. Ninety-three percent. Ninety-one percent. Ninety-six percent. Eighty-four percent. I mean, that's just incredibly good scores for what we're doing in terms of communications. The learning environment, the reason why there's an extra school there is STEM is broken out separately, so that's why, okay? Learning environment, eighty-seven percent satisfied. Eighty-five, eighty-eight, eighty-five, ninety-one, ninety percent. Just great numbers. Understanding the rules and the norms of our school district, ninety-one percent. Eighty-eight, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-two, eighty-nine percent. School connectedness, again, all in the mid-eighties throughout the district. I mean, just incredible, great, solid scores. Parents being satisfied with what they see and hear. There's a couple of categories where we're trying to understand where some of the scores got a little bit lower and John and I were looking at it today. And for instance, a question about kids treat each other, one of the questions of five in a category might be, kids treat them, each other with respect, okay? And some parents would say, yes, absolutely, and some parents would say, mostly. And some parents would say, I'm unsure of that. I don't know. In the way the survey results are tallied, that's counted as a negative. So you might get fifty-four percent saying, I don't really know if all the kids treat each other nicely. And so that goes down as a bad score. So we're trying to unravel that and we'll give you some more detail as we go on, but I can tell you, I am just thrilled at, at the, the kind of response that we got from our parent surveys. Just great stuff. And that's it for me.
Great. Next, I believe we have a presentation.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sheila Castanelli and Jim Stolzel to, and Roseanne Horton, I'm sorry, to come up and give you a presentation on the next generation science standards. This is a rollout now by the state and there's a, a bit of a process to it. What they're asking all the districts across the state of Connecticut to do is to have a presentation of what the standards are and what they look like and to gauge your response somehow over the next several weeks and me to report back whether these were received favorably. I think what's happened is that the state, in recognizing a recent poor rollout of Sback in Common Core, for instance, they're trying to avoid that same difficulty. And so they're being a little bit more inclusive and looking for feedback. Is that right?
That's absolutely right.
Okay. All right, Sheila, I'll let you take over.
So this is just an introduction and an overview of the next generation science standards. They have not been adopted by the State Board of Education yet. As Mr. Augustine said, they are looking for feedback, this Connecticut State Board of Education. So we are going to give you an overview as to what, kind of how we got here and why we're here now. We have had Connecticut science standards for ten years. It is usually a curriculum cycle goes through every ten years of looking at curriculum and doing revision. So we are actually, as a state, at the right time to be looking at our standards. With the advances in understanding on how students learn, we are really primed to do that as well. We have been talking about twenty-first century career readiness skills, looking at looking at engineering, problem solving, analytical thinking, and communicating. So these new standards are all about that. And of course, I can't stand here without talking about the Common Core or the Connecticut Core State Standards and how these Next Generation Science Standards are aligned to that and actually really complement it incredibly well. So it's not like we're going to be doing something totally brand-new and different. It'll actually complement what we've been doing with nonfiction reading. In this, we have science observation, argumentation, and discourse, which all builds our language skills, all goes along with our Connecticut Core. And I've also shared with you, along with some people from the high school, about the AP and the change in the redesign with the AP. So this will also be reflective in what this new science standards will look like. Roseanne Houghton, our K-5 Science Coordinator, is going to share with you an overview of what this looks like.
This is an example of what the NGSS would prepare and we would give to teachers. This is how we would read the standard. And this example is from kindergarten, PS, Performance Standard, for motion and stability in a unit about forces and interactions. There's a lot contained right here. So we would be unpacking this. But quickly, at the top, you see what children are expected to do. The red words, the words in red, outline how it would look at that grade level in kindergarten. Then underneath that, you see the listing of the science and engineering practices, along with the core content and concepts. At the bottom of the page, you see where it would align to math and language arts. So it's all neatly packaged, a lot on one page. But if we go forward to the next. We know that all of this will be guided by the science and engineering practices. There are eight of them. The words in red are the areas that would be different in the NGSS than in our current Connecticut Inquiry Standards that we're working with now. And you'll see it goes along with defining problems, developing and using models, designing solutions, and engaging in argument from eviden, from evidence. And those are areas that we're working on in language arts and in math. Those are twenty-first century skills. So these are practices that we are currently working towards right now in the district. In Connecticut, we have our Inquiry Standards, which are not much different than the practices we would be moving to.
And Jim Stozel, our six-twelve science secondary instructional leader, will share some information as to what it looks like across grades.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Here is kind of looking in a little bit deeper into that eye chart that we started with, looking at the standards themselves and kind of how they play out across the grade bands. It's very similar to what science teachers are used to right now. We have spiraling both content and skills within the current Connecticut State Framework. And that continues here. But here's an example of kind of how the same idea plays forward. In this case, it's carrying on from Roseanne's example, so looking at forces in motion. The kindergarten example, already collecting data and analyzing it. And, and what does that look like in kindergarten in this case, where you're looking at how an object changes its speed or direction of motion when a force is applied? It's match, matchbox cars on a ramp. And kids look at different ramps and different matchbox car masses or sizes and, and in a very inquiry-based fashion that we're currently doing now. That goes on then later on in elementary school. And they start actually looking at designing experiments, making measurements for themselves to look at patterns that can help them predict future motion. What that might look like rather than matchbox cars is a pendulum. And they watch a pendulum go back and forth, time the period of it. And then the prediction could be, three seconds from now, where is that pendulum gonna be? So there's a math component that ties into it. There's much more robust and rich explanation expected with this. Make observations and draw conclusions. Now there's a more argue it with the form, with data to support it. So it's much richer than what we're currently doing. In six through eight, same type thing, except now we're building in the idea of momentum into the process. And again, there's a mathematical component to that. We have two objects collide. Could be billiard balls on a pool table. Could be matchbox cars again. It could be a lot of different ways to do this. And that's really what we're gonna try to figure out, is how we're gonna implement those things within, within our district, combined with some things coming from the state to kind of help us sort those out. Then the high school example, even more rich in the analysis and starting to add an engineering component that is very visible. Here, it's looking at collisions again, but in this case, designing some kind of device to help reduce forces of that collision. So kids are making airbags. Very, very different than the way we do science right now, where we take data, draw observations, support the conclusions. In this case, failure is almost expected. You come up with a design, it doesn't work, you redesign it, and that becomes part of the process. So much, much more like real-world problem solving and much more like kids do anyway, when they're building things and playing with things, when, when they're looking at their toys. Next slide. Looking at the core content areas, they kind of break up into a bunch of different categories that are very similar to what we see right now. There are a few changes. For example, you'll see Earth and Space Science shows up there. And that goes back to some older curriculum that we have that we've kind of gotten away from. And then the blue category over to the right is this engineering component, which is similar to the Science, Technology, and Society component that's in the current Connecticut State Framework. So there's little differences, a lot that's the same. On the next slide, the state of Connecticut, two years ago, when they were first starting to consider the Next Generation Science Standards and as they were getting drafted, did a study to crosswalk what the current state framework lays out for all the different grade bands to what Next Gen lays out. And they came up with this kind of eye chart, but the dark green at the bottom are good matches for what we currently do. The light green in the middle are okay matches to what we currently do, which could be, we're doing that content, but at a different grade. And then the gray areas where they would consider some breakage in the process that we would need to look at either adding to our curriculum or significantly moving it from where we're currently doing it. Examples of that would be this engineering component really isn't robust in the Connecticut State Framework. That being said, we're doing a lot of that already. So I think the, the numbers that kind of look a little ominous up there, that oh, wow, a third of what we do isn't well-matched, isn't, isn't as scary for our district because of our STEM and inquiry initiatives.
Even at our lower end in the K-5 this year, even in our fifth-grade classrooms, we've been looking at some of those engineering design practices to see how we can incorporate them in the current curriculum. And they looked at some acoustical projects. They walked around the building and chose an area that might be noisy and what design solutions they could come up with that would help eliminate the noise in the building. So that would be the kind of elementary design project that might fit nicely with NGSS and our current curriculum. The differences with the Next Generation Science learning. Currently, we look at it at one dimension, one dimension at a time. In the NGSS, there are three dimensions simultaneously. And that is where we plan and conduct. We develop and use a model and use evidence to support the explanation. That would be the problem solving. And when you get to one answer, you may have to redesign and get to another answer. You might have multiple answers in the same classroom for the same problem. And that would be more like an NGSS approach. And as Jim had said, that's really more real-world and more about how we go about our everyday living and our everyday playing, too.
We are fortunate that we have, Roseanne and Jim are both on two different state committees that are looking at the NGSS standards. Jim, you're on.
I'm on the District Advisory Council, which is kind of the highest level that they've got. Seventy of the districts are represented here. And it's really where they started getting inputs before even deciding, deciding to push this out for inputs from the general public, on what's gonna work, what's not gonna work, what are certification issues? What kind of problems do you see with the, with the Next Generation Standards? What are, what are the real detailed problems for us implementing as a state? The other committee at the high school level, Peter Schmidt, one of the physics teachers, is involved in the, the assessment committee. So he's starting to look at already what kind of things we're thinking about long-term as far as assessment goes.
And Roseanne?
And I'm on the State Science Assessment Advisory Committee as well at the elementary level. And we have been looking at how we question students in science at the elementary level and how assessment pieces may go forward. So that is in the works.
So as Mr. Augustine said, the State Department of Ed is being a little more cautious in rolling out the Next Generation Science Standards. Has asked these different committees to go back to their districts and share the information and overview, and I know this was a very quick overview, to look for feedback from boards of educations. The State Board of Ed is hoping to bring it back. The Connecticut State Department of Education is hoping to bring it back to the State Board of Ed this summer and hoping to get an approval for it. And once that happens, then a timeline will come out as to when districts are expected to do some sort of a progression on switching over from our current standards to the Next Generation Standards. And then conversations will happen as to what does our assessment look like? Because we are, right now, we still have our science CMT and our science CAPT. And those are here until we know. That's what the state keeps telling us. So as we, as a district, learn more, we will share it with you as the Board of Ed.
If I can add a couple of comments. The state, there is a tentative rollout sequence or schedule. Just so that you understand the timeline, they're talking about maybe in 2016, seventeen, rolling out pre-K to three, sixth, and ninth grade. The following year, then each subsequent grade. And then finally, you would have full implementation in the 2018, nineteen year. Is that still accurate?
That's still what they're saying, but it still says draft.
Nothing is carved in stone.
Correct.
So we, you know, like Common Core, we have time. You know, Jim was talking about the, you know, the third of the curriculum that's really not solid for us. Well, we would have time to fix that, just as we did when we anticipated the Common Core coming in, you know, back in 2012, okay? We had time to ramp up to it and make it right. The only, the only hesitations that I see, and there's a couple of them. And I think they're all surmountable, but I, I think it's important to put them on the table at this time. Jim referenced the certification issue, okay? We do not have a lot of earth science certified teachers in Monroe, okay? In fact, there's not a lot of earth science certified teachers in the state of Connecticut, okay? That curriculum is just not as strong as the life and the physical sciences, okay? And it should be. I was an earth science teacher and that's why I agree with that. So I think that, I think that the state is gonna have some work cut out for them to get duly certified people in place to make sure that this happens in, in an appropriate fashion. And they only have a couple of years to do it. So I think they need to make a commitment to doing that. So there's one piece of feedback I would offer to them. The second, the second thing is, all, all of our presenters tonight alluded to the, the spiraling of the curriculum. And what the spiraling means is that you get away from, especially in the earlier grades, in the K-eight grades, you get away from where you might have a whole year of, say, life science or a whole year of physical science. Here, in order to develop these strands appropriately, you would have to have earth and physical and life sciences and STEM sciences kind of interwoven in the course of the year. And just like the Common Core, the textbook manufacturers are not gonna be there in time, is my guess, okay? I think it's gonna be a real problem for resources, just like it was with math, this, with this rollout, this most recent rollout. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that companies will jump on the bandwagon early if it gets approved and, and come up with the appropriate materials. If not, I think we're gonna have to really be looking at how we're gonna bridge the gap, okay? So those are the two downsides that I see in this. I looked over this, we spent a couple of hours together talking about this. I looked over the standards. I'm very pleased with what I see there. I think, I think they're good standards, again, like the Connecticut Core standards. But I, I just think the, the certification issue is, is gonna be a big one and the resources are gonna be another. So that's my feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to old business. First up is policies, second review with a vote anticipated. Do I have a motion? You make a motion to approve? The policy is fifty-one twenty-four, fifty-one twenty-five dash one-one, fifty-one twenty-six, fifty-one thirty-one dot nine-eleven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these four policies? Nobody? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you very much. Moving on to new business, we will start with field trips, first review. And first up is going to be the Portugal, Portugal and Spain field trip. Is somebody here to discuss that? No? All right. Does anybody have any questions that I would have?
Well, I can make discussion on it if you'd like.
Well, it's just the first review, so they, that would be page, I'll tell you. Twenty-six of our packet is the information, starting on page twenty-six, is the information on that trip. All right. Then we will move on to the second item on field trips, which would be, excuse me while I get back to that, would be the Beijing Shanghai China trip.
Good evening. I'm Ben Strange, and I'm the one who is organizing the trip to China for next year.
Does anybody, does anybody have any questions? It's on.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on that trip? This is just the first review, we'll be voting next time.
What are you most excited about?
Among other things, I, I went there last summer for a couple of weeks. And I'm excited to go there at a time when it might not be in excess of a hundred degrees. That was something of a surprise. I think the students are going to find a lot to be surprised at because we keep getting an image in some places of China as a country that is what is still called developing. Odd that it should still be developing after five thousand years of recorded history there. But when I went there, I really expected to see infrastructure for a country that has not been driving the automobile very long to be rather crude. In fact, it was highly sophisticated. I don't know that I could say the same of everyone's driving technique. For a bit of perspective, our group leader asked me when I got my driver's license, and I said nineteen seventy-three. And he said, almost nobody in China has been driving that long. So it's a place where a lot of exciting things are happening, where a lot of important things are happening that certainly affect us in a big way. Politically, militarily, and what tonight's package has by way of curriculum connection is really just a smattering. Because when they get there, they're going to find all sorts of connections that they might not have realized beforehand.
What do you expect for a turnout, Ben?
Well, it's, it's an iffy thing, actually, because when you say Italy or Spain, it conjures up images in a teenager's mind in a way that Slovakia and Poland and the Czech Republic, and I've also taken students there, but that was a smaller trip, just don't do. So I don't know whether it's gonna be well-subscribed or not. I'd be happy with a small group or a larger one. I don't think it's gonna be one of our large ones like the one I had a couple of years ago to Italy. That was forty-two kids.
Great.
Anybody else? Alan?
What do you want the students to get out of it?
You know, the question, I, I've, I've been taking kids on tours like this since nineteen ninety-one. And China will be the twenty-third country that I've taken students to. But it's difficult, even when you get them here to tell about their experience, for them to know exactly what to say. And that's because they're still processing it. And they're going to be processing it for seventy years after the trip is over. So for the rest of their lives, this is gonna be something that keeps intersecting with their experience. How many times are they going to say in conversation, "When I was in China"? And that'll go on for the next seven decades. So what I want them to bring back is a realization that the way we do things here isn't the only way. The way we have chosen to organize our lives, the things we've decided to eat. Brother, when they get to the avenues in Peking after the sun goes down and the street sellers come out with their fried tarantula kebabs, they're gonna realize that not everything is quite the same in this new place. And if you're curious, no, I didn't try that.
Anybody else have any questions? Sounds like an awesome trip, so I hope you have a lot of students sign up to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. All right, next item is Item B, which is approval of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen rates and fee schedule, tuition fees, and facility use fees. Do I have a motion to approve that? I have a motion, um, to, and a second, to approve the two thousand fifteen, sixteen rate fee schedules, tuition fees, and facility u- uh, use fees. Do I have any discussion on these? Thank you. Alan?
Why, um, why are the student fees so high?
Which fees? The parking fees? Um, I don't know. John, were you here when the, when the one-fifty was instituted?
Yes. Um, it was because, as the student said, we bought the junior parking lot, it had to be paved, um, and we had to pay back the town. I don't know where we are in that payback process.
It's done. It's done. It was done.
And now the funds are typically used for striping the parking lot, fixing the curbing after the winter damage, uh, chip sealing, uh, those kinds of things are all earmarked out of that parking phase.
We, do we have a count of how many typically buy parking passes per year?
Not sure we have it right now.
I can get it.
Yeah, we can get it for you.
Make sure and park it.
But we have, we also have some comparable, um, for surrounding towns, how much they charge. So, um, Shelton charges a hundred dollars, Joel Barlow is at one-fifty, and for Joel Barlow, it's only for seniors can park there, um, whereas here, it's, once you have a car, pretty much have your license. Trumbull is seventy-five, Shelton's eighty-five, um, and both Fairfield High Schools are at one-fifty. Um, we have a report that Pomprog is two-fifty, but I was trying to check that.
I just talked to the business manager. He confirmed.
It's two-fifty, yes. So Pomprog charges two-hundred-and-fifty a year for parking. So we're kind of comparable.
Lee, did you have a question?
Well, I think, you know, I think what would be interesting is to look at the amount of, of revenue that parking tickets bring in, and what are the costs involved in striping and taking care of curbs and all that, and seeing, you know, a more thorough accounting of what excess is there, what, you know, is there excess? And I personally would feel more comfortable voting on that piece of this at a later time after we have some more information.
Gabby, you don't know the answers to those questions off the top of your head, so...
Not off the top of my head. No, I'm not. I'm not even going to...
Is there, is there any reason, Gabby, why these, this would need action today and not July twentieth at the next board meeting?
Um, the, the ones that I would personally, I would really like us to have action on, I mean, we can table the parking one. Uh, we do need to set the tuition rates, because we do need to publish, um, for preschool and for anybody who comes in out of district. I'd also like to, because, only because we have the state coming in tomorrow and Wednesday for cafeteria audits, I'd kind of like to be able to set that and the food prices. And everything else basically is staying the same. Um, just one point, I, I think the students had said the parking fees were five or thirty dollars. Uh, the fee is ten dollars, and we don't change it. I think if the police department comes in, they charge a higher rate, because it's a, an official parking ticket that the police issue you, so that goes to the town. That doesn't come to us.
So it sounds to me that you could, an amendment to the motion could be made to approve everything except the parking fees at Massey pending further information. And then we could, we could get the data for you at July twentieth and, and have it taken care of at that point.
All right, then I would need a, a motion to amend the, okay? Second? All right. So we have a motion to, um, amend the motion, um, to remove the parking fees from Massey High School out of the original motion. All in favor? All right? And then, so we need to vote on the original motion, um, which we have a, a motion in a second to accept the, uh, rates for the two thousand fifteen and sixteen year. All in favor? That's what, without the, right, we've already voted on this, so this is the original motion. Thank you. All right, we will move on, uh, to the superintendent evaluation, um, and we will be going into executive session. So do I have a motion, um, to go into executive session and invite the superintendent? Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in, any discussion on this? All in favor? Great, we will not be coming back here. There'll be no action taken past this.